Everything's online, we can begin. Okay, welcome to the City Commission Work Session for Tuesday, April 27th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we didn't receive any comments on our items for tonight through email. No public comments from that regard. We have two discussion items tonight. The first one being the strategic planning update regarding second round of public engagement. So if you take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We just wanted to get in front of you real quick prior to next week, which kicks off our second round of engagement. Sarah with Planning Nexus here tonight. She's going to share her screen and show some slides real quick just to... I know we talked a little bit about it last week, but just to give you a full overview of what's to be expected over the next month for this round of engagement. And we'd be happy to answer any questions for you. But Sarah, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, great, thanks Jared. Hi, everybody. We're back again this week. You know, last week we gave you kind of an update on what we heard in the first round. Now, we're quickly gearing up for the second round, which is happening next week. So we're really excited. I think I gave a little preview, but I've got maybe a little bit more details to share with you. But we're really excited about what's shaping up to be sort of a full day on May 6th, but also kind of expanding the... relaxing, I guess, the schedule just a little bit, expanding the second round of engagement to really think about it going throughout the month of May. It was really clear to us from talking with the Community Committee and sort of getting them to help us strategize about ways to hear from the folks and get the folks involved who we didn't hear from in the first round, that that's going to take a little bit of time. And we wanted to... we have the time in the schedule. We just shifted a few things around to relax a little bit, to give the committee and us a little bit more time to have the second round take place. So I think, as we mentioned last week, we are targeting this May 6th day to do some in-person sort of drop-in, pop-up kind of, if you will, engagement events. It should be really fun. We're going to be at K-State's campus on the terrace from 11:00 to 1:00. And we're going to have, hopefully, some of the Community Committee members helping us staff that as well. That's kind of Intercept style. So we're hoping to engage students as they're, you know, transversing the campus and get them to engage with us on the strategic plan elements. We're going to have a downtown happy hour from 4:30 to 6:00 at the outdoor dining platforms. And so we'll have six different, almost like mini sessions, going at the same time at these different restaurants and bars. And so again, hopefully, we're advertising this. So hopefully, people will come out and, you know, seek us out. But we'll also hopefully catch some folks that are just there for maybe their Thursday evening meeting up with some friends. And we can entice them to come over and take a look at the... and give us some input on the plan elements. And then we're going to be at the We Fall Pavilion from 7:00 to 9:00. Jared and Vivian have been working hard to kind of line up some food truck and some ice cream for that. So we're kind of marketing that as a barbecue and ice cream, sort of social thing. So we're hoping that will maybe pull people out as well in that 7:00 to 9:00 timeframe. So it should be fun. We should be able to engage, hopefully, a lot of people throughout the day. And we're working... I'm going to share in a little bit kind of what we're going to do, ask people to engage with, how we're going to do that. And then the roadshow component is something that initially we conceived of as more of a passive thing where maybe you put posters up or you have a board up. We've already... Vivian's been working with the library to allow us to put some road... like have the roadshow displayed in their vestibule so people can snap a QR code and take a survey right there wherever we are. But it was clear after the Community Committee meeting that they... the Community Committee really wanted to be helpful in this matter. And so we're working with the co-chairs to coordinate and work with the rest of the committee to actually make the roadshow a little more substantial. So instead of maybe just a poster somewhere or a board set up somewhere, that they'll actually staff some of these at locations. And again, Intercept style, you know, hopefully engage people, get them to give us input. So we're working right now, putting together a list of locations that the committee suggested that will really help us reach those underrepresented populations. So again, we think of this as pop-up engagement happening as, you know, as opportunities present themselves or as the committee has time. They may say, hey, I'll go hang out, you know, in the Douglas Center for a couple hours on Saturday morning. Fanny Fang, one of our... one of the co-chairs, you know, she owns the market there in town. She's willing to have a table out front of the market and even, you know, give people a discount if they participate in the store, which is really great. So anyway, we're working to try to, you know, really be broad and, you know, think outside the box a little bit and go to the people more in this round, as I mentioned before. But that's going to be happening basically like the week of the 10th through the end of the month. We are offering a virtual meeting on May 10th from 12:00 to 1:00. That was our lunch hour, is our best virtual meeting from the round one. Attended meeting seems to work for people. So we will offer that again, just in case people aren't comfortable coming out in person. We will offer that virtual meeting. And then, of course, we will have the... using the website, the EngageMHK.org website, we will have the same questions and activities online so people can do it at their own pace. We're going to try to get that up on Monday through the whole end of the month. So I think this round, just we really felt like, you know, expanding it a little bit beyond just a week or two is really important. And this roadshow component's still kind of shaping up. But the Community Committee's really committed to, you know, trying to reach these underrepresented populations. And it's going to take a little bit, you know, of effort to kind of, again, go into them. So that is the sort of overview. What we're going to be doing is sharing and testing the draft elements of the plan. And when I say elements, you know, the draft vision statement, the values that we've written, the goals and the mission for the city, which we drafted from the input from round one and with input from the Staff Technical Committee and the Community Committee. So we've got, again, it's all draft. Nothing is, you know, final yet. We're just wanting to test it back with the community since we asked them in round one their input to help shape those framework elements. We're now putting it back and saying, hey, did we hear you correctly? We're going to have them rate each statement on a scale of 1 to 5 on if it resonates with them and then provide us some additional comments. We're working on some additional follow-up questions. You know, there was... we got into good discussion with both committees about, you know, the use of small town and what that really means and what do people, you know, mean by that. And we have... we're going to frame some follow-up questions because we've used some of that verbiage. And, you know, it may resonate with some people and it may strike a chord with others. And we're curious to see... we're testing it, right? So we're curious to see what people think about it. But we have a few follow-up questions specifically, you know, for these different elements of the plan. So we'll get some good validation, hopefully, of the direction of the plan. And then for the action area, under the goals, you know, that's where we're really going to start putting the recommendations together. We're going to have some action area prioritization. So I really appreciate Commissioner Reddy's comment last week when we were talking about this. And you said, you know, I really want to know where people want the city to invest or not invest. So I like that framing. And so rather than just maybe asking them what they want to see or their prioritization, actually framing it around sort of an investment type of framing. So we're still working on that piece of it. But we're basically going to have, you know, these sort of objectives underneath the... it's going to frame up the actions underneath each goal. And we're going to get some prioritization from people using sticker dots to kind of get them to share with us where they really want to see the city invest in the future. So this is just some images to kind of... of some other things we've done that, you know, are kind of similar to this. It'll give you a sense... this is actually something we did at a... this top right picture here of a brewery in Roswell, Georgia. We had different... it's kind of hard to see, we had different stations. There's a number four over there, a number five over here. And as people were there mingling, kind of, you know, having their social time... this is obviously pre-COVID. But then we were having them stop at these different stations and engage. This is another kind of, you know, we're outside. We've got boards here, people are engaging. So we see this, you know, this is how hopefully it will kind of shape up for us. This image down here, the bottom right, this is kind of an example of a part of how the roadshow could go. So this is actually an image of a project here in Columbus. This is downtown Columbus. I just took this this weekend. I happened to be out along a riverfront and I saw this, the Rapid Five Project. It had a QR code and you can snap it. Theirs was more informational. But these are the kind of things, you put these boards up, you put these things around, you do a call to action. This one's fairly, you know, straightforward. But we could even do something a little more engaging with folks, get them to snap this QR code and they can take the survey wherever they're at. So that's, you know, at least a kind of example of how we see part of that roadshow happening. And then, of course, you know, manning a table if we can get people to engage with us, depending on how the committee wants to, you know, each location and what's allowed. We see the opportunity to kind of, again, be out, go into the public in this round. These are just some examples. We don't have all the content in this yet, but you can just kind of see. We are going to have this QR code board that allows people to snap the code and start engaging right away. We have this menu board that's going to outline the vision, the values, the goals and the mission that people can kind of read. And if they want to ask questions or interact with us or the Community Committee members who are helping to staff these events on the 6th, you know, we will have that. And then again, they snap the QR code. We will have paper copies available of the survey questions and the input questions in case someone doesn't have a smartphone and doesn't want to do it on their smartphone. But the idea is to, you know, make it easy. They just... they can read it, they can snap the code and then they can, you know, engage. And then this is the sort of board that we're starting to shape up where we put the objectives, kind of action areas underneath. And then we get people to put their sticker dots there to indicate where they want, you know, investment from the city from these different goal areas. So we're still working through this with Jared to get this, you know, kind of finalized. But that is... that's sort of a little bit more detailed than what we, you know, when we provided last week, so we wanted to share that with you. I have one more slide about kind of the remaining project schedule, but I think I'll pause there. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take those now.
No questions here, Sarah.
Okay, great. So we just wanted to highlight the rest of the schedule here. So we do have the round two engagement happening in the month of May. We are planning in late June, a joint work session with both committees. We want to... we've been working with them, you know, sort of in tandem, but separately. Would like to bring them together now that we're really going to start, you know, working with the elements and the actions and the plan, action agenda. And then we're also planning a retreat, which we're working with Jared, retreat with you all, the City Commission, for that Friday. We're shaping up that agenda, but, you know, half-day kind of thing, maybe with you all. And then back in late July, another joint work session with the committees. And then in August, finalizing the plan, getting that all pulled together. And we'll need to talk... I can talk with Jared still and you all about how to kind of wrap it up with a final presentation to you all as well. So that's kind of how it shapes up. We're still on target, on track to finish this at the end of August for the original schedule. We just shifted things kind of within our, you know, our timeframe to really allow this round two engagement to unfold, I think, the way that it really, you know, needs to happen with the help of the committees. So that's all I had for tonight. I can stop sharing here.
The only other thing I was going to add was I'll be emailing all of you our publicity toolkit for this next round of engagement. If you don't mind, there'll be some images that you can attach to emails, social media graphics, some draft social media posts, if you want to use those however you'd like. But I would appreciate the Commission's help as well, spreading the word for what's going on over the next two weeks here with the in-person and virtual events. But then, of course, over... we'll keep you posted on kind of how that roadshow is going as well, understanding that the survey's going to be available pretty much throughout the entire month of May so we can continue to reach people throughout the month of May if they weren't able to participate in any of the in-person or virtual meetings.
So this is Commissioner Reddy. You know, one of the reasons we wanted to have it done a little bit earlier in the summertime was to see if it can guide a little bit in our budget discussion. It doesn't seem like that's when we would have it ready. Would we have any indication or is that not possible?
When... we will... I think we'll have a pretty good draft coming out of that... actually going into the retreat, you know, at the end of June. So I'm not sure exactly when. Maybe Jared or one of you can remind me when you start that process. But, you know, we're getting really close to having something that I think can, you know, start to inform that work, even if we haven't, you know, packaged it in its final sort of format and put a bow on it. I think there will be enough that you can work with, you know, by the, you know, middle to end of June.
And that should be helpful. We're looking under the new guidelines of having to have a pretty good idea where we're at in that mid-July type standpoint.
Yeah, I think that helps. At least we will have so much information that it just adds another layer to the discussion. So yeah, it would be great if we have something to look at as far as budget priorities for the City Commission by the end of June, early July. Thank you.
Sarah, this is Commissioner Esther Brooke. I... on that... on the menu card or the handwritten card, people can utilize that to...
I can't hear anything. I'm not sure if there's any questions or if I just... if you're muted.
Can you hear us?
Switching on, just one second. Sarah, can you hear us now? Now...
Jared's going to break the projector.
I think that's what's going to happen. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Sarah, can you hear me?
Did you hear Yusha's response related to... And did you hear Ron talking about the budget?
No, I did not.
Okay. We'll try that again real quick.
I think you heard Commissioner Reddy talk about having some information, at least by the retreat at the end of June. And then I just indicated that we'll need to have a pretty good handle on where our budget is by mid-July. So I think that will be helpful. And then Commissioner Esther Brooke has a question.
Yeah, Sarah, my question's just in regard to the handwritten kind of response to the survey on the second round of engagement. How do folks get that back to... Is there... there's going to be drop boxes or is there a postage-type situation? What's that look like?
Well, that's a good... that's a good thing we should think through. Right now, the idea was that as people are engaging with us, you know, they would fill it out right... you know, they would take some time and fill it out right at the event and just give it back to us. But we could think through with Jared, maybe a process for folks if they want to take it and fill it out and drop it back off, you know, to the city building or something or at a library. We could maybe work with the libraries to be drop collection points. We were thinking a bit more like if somebody didn't have a smartphone or didn't, maybe feel comfortable engaging on the smartphone, that they could just pick up a piece of paper and, you know, fill it out kind of right there at the event.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone. We'll... Sarah and I are excited to actually be coming out to Manhattan next week. We're flying in on Wednesday. We'll be there all day Thursday, so we'll get to see everybody in 3D. So we're excited about that. We will take a... we're going to get a tour with Jared and kind of get the lay of the land. So we're... this is exciting part... time in the process as it all kind of comes together and we get to get back out to the public. So we'll provide you another update after we get through this second round. Thank you all.
Okay, looking forward to seeing you in person next week. That should be fun. Appreciate the briefing. Thank you. Okay, and I guess we can move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the Manhattan Developmental Code, Article 264, Design Standards. Sure.
I don't even know if we have any participants left. Actually, yeah, it doesn't matter, so... Yeah. There you go.
Okay.
Good evening. John Adams, Senior Long Range Planner with the Community Development Department. For this presentation tonight, I'm just going to be focusing on what really has changed from the current standards rather than going into excruciating detail on all of the new stuff that's in there. Now, the first division in this article is Design Standards for Purely Residential Development. The second division is for Commercial and Mixed-Use Development. Now, I'm going to be covering these two divisions out of order because there's much more interesting material in the first division. And I'd rather end on that note than bore you at the end and trail off. Looking at Aggieville District, the standards are mostly unchanged from what we have today. But we are adding some provisions that are called for in the Aggieville Community Vision. One of these is to allow more prominence for structures that are sitting at one of these gateway intersections that are marked here. So a little bit extra height, an extra story or so, just so that they can make the corners much more prominent as you enter the Aggieville area. The ACV Plan also recognized that redevelopment at Aggieville is likely to be at a larger scale than the older stock of buildings. So to tame the visual scale, modulations in material and structure kick in when a building is more than 200 feet long, such as the Lumont Hotel here. And those really constitute the only changes from existing design standards for Aggieville, except we have expanded the list of acceptable cladding material for new construction. The general commercial design standards apply in the business commercial, community commercial, and neighborhood commercial districts. The intent of the standards is to add some visual appeal, to put buildings up closer to the street and to make development more comprehensible and accessible by other transportation modes. This is actually a codification of trends that we've been seeing in development, anyway, through the community. The standalone big-box store is... that's only accessible by automobile has been supplanted by this outbuilding model that you see illustrated here. The new standards have requirements for pedestrian systems, including sidewalks linking storefronts and better sidewalk connections throughout, like here at Menards and here at West Loop. And architectural elements to enhance the appearance of the development and thereby the community as a whole. The mixed-use district is an entirely new concept for Manhattan. Most of the commercial zoning districts do allow residential, so you could say we already have mixed-use zoning. But this district is meant to be used for particular kinds of downtowny development that's currently not so easy to build unless you do it as a PUD. This new MUD district has that flexibility built in. The district requires some base ratios of land use mix and design standards cover layout of buildings and streets and building types and minimum architectural standards. The MDC also includes two new commercial overlay districts. These were actually developed many years ago in coordination with the county, but were never adopted. One is the Gateway Corridor Overlay along K-177 from Deep Creek Road up to the Kansas River Bridge. And the other is the Eureka Valley Overlay along K-18 from the Ogden City Limits to Miller Parkway. These standards are largely the same as the general commercial standards I talked about earlier. But there isn't any focus on pedestrian systems given their location. The standards instead aim for a visual interest, avoid having a series of blank boxes along the highways. It's the same sort of thing that we have in the general standards, facade articulation, fenestration, and permitted materials. So now we're going back to the residential design standards. For some of these, there was no change made at all. We just moved them into the MDC from the current zoning regulations. And there were only one or two slight changes to both the MPRO overlay and the UCR district, besides, of course, the name changes for them. A completely new set of standards that we are introducing are for apartment complexes that are outside of the ORD, which is what we know today as the MPRO overlay, such as this one on College at Claflin. So to me, these new regulations are simply standardizing some of the very positive features of apartment complex development that we've been seeing in the community anyway, such as buildings up closer to the street, parking lots mostly behind buildings. The only thing lacking here that are in the standards are the connections from the public sidewalk to the internal sidewalk system. And the final part I'm going to be covering tonight are changes to what is now known as the TNO, the Traditional Neighborhood Overlay. Early on, we had discussions about making the overlay actually work for the people living in it. We see a lot of exception requests coming to the BZA from lots in the TNO, people wanting setback reductions or increases in lot coverage. It's a pretty good indicator that your code isn't working when you see the same kinds of requests over and over again. That's when you ask yourself, do we have this wrong? Oops. My colleague Ben Schmill and I did sampling of setbacks then and lot coverage in the TNO's district, analyzing 100 ward lots for their front setbacks, 100 ward lots for their side setbacks, and 100 lots for coverage. We used only the ward standard lots, those that measure 50 by 150, so we'd have consistency in our samples across the ward. Using then aerial photos, we built up a database of representative figures in the overlay district. And then using those data, we made some changes to the district's standards to make it better align with the buildings that are... that have been there for decades and decades. The current standard for the front setback is a range of 14 to 25 feet. This to accommodate the smaller front setback you see in the TNO. And the maximum is meant to prevent a house being built too far out of line with existing structures. But the maximum doesn't work everywhere. This block of Fairchild has setbacks that are well over the 25-foot limit. Because the lots are bigger, they sit higher than the street level, so the houses are built further back on the lots, not so close to the slope that goes down to the sidewalk. As a result, no building on this block conforms to TNO standards. So we adapted a tool used in several cities for infill and redevelopment called setback averaging that samples the other buildings along a block face to come up with an average setback. The new house can be built within a range of plus or minus seven feet from that average but cannot transgress the OEN minimum setback of 12 feet, no closer than that. Applying that rule to this block results in 75% conformity. And within the OEN as a whole, we can move from 53% conformity currently to 94%. Now, for corner lots, there's an additional barrier to overcome, a second front yard. The effect of this definition is not so burdensome on the square... the more square and larger lots that you see in newer development. The ward lots are generally quite rectangular. They have a width-to-depth ratio of 1 to 3. So naturally, most of the housing that's built on the ward fully utilizes the lot, by which I mean it doesn't shy away from the edges in the corner. And the result is easy to document and observe. Our sampling showed that only a third of houses on corner lots in the OEN are conforming to their secondary frontage setback at present. But by making the standard more reflective of the built environment, we can increase that to 79% by making it eight feet. On lot coverage, the current standard in the TNO is actually less than the base zoning standards would allow if the TNO weren't in place. Coverage is the ratio of building footprints to the lot size. So clearly, 30% is not cutting it from any lots in the TNO. It just doesn't reflect reality. In fact, nearly half the lots are non-conforming with respect to lot coverage. The OEN proposal is to make it 35%, like in most of the rest of the city. For a standard ward lot of 7,500 square feet, that adds another 375 square feet that they can add to that lot that can be built. And that would make most lots compliant. I think these are really important adjustments to make. There's nothing inherently better about a 25-foot front setback compared to a 12-foot front setback. Yet, when the zoning regulations were adopted in the '60s, I believe, they were modeling a post-war manner of development that was very different from the pre-war models that we see in the wards. So through no fault of their own, hundreds of houses in the wards were rendered non-conforming when standards specifically intended for new development were imposed on places that had been existing just fine for decades. The TNO was originally created to let... then after the fact, TNO was created to let development fit the existing urban form, but it didn't go quite far enough in modeling what was existing. So the BZA has been hearing several cases... exception cases... So, the BZA has been hearing several cases, exception cases, every year for years, and it's all just make-work. We are protecting no one by rendering these houses non-conforming because they are harmlessly non-conforming. No one's hurt by a house sitting a little too close to the sidewalk. That's why the BZA finds it so easy to grant these exceptions when they see them. The best fix is to amend the code to make the most of these non-conformities disappear. That's the extent of my overview, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Just to have one, we talked at great length about this conforming/non-conforming, and of course, one of the intents of this was to get a lot of these properties out of the non-conforming category, and I guess we've done that. Now, what about those that are still in there? How are we going to address that issue?
Currently, what happens if it's sitting there non-conforming, no one touches it, everything's fine. If they come and they want to do a building addition, then we say, "You have a non-conforming setback. You need to get an exception for that in order to be able to build this structure." So, we're still, we're not going to completely eliminate the problem. I'm not sure what we would do to do that. We'd basically have to say, we'd have to go to zero in some cases for a side setback because you have a few outliers that actually are zero, like there's a church on, up, I can't think of exactly the street it's on. I want to say that it's on Laramie, and a nice stone church, but it's basically sitting on the sidewalk right at the edge.
Okay, and I think some of the issue was that some of the owners were worried about not being able to sell or do some different things if it stayed non-conforming. They wanted some kind of grandfather clause or something, is what I remember.
So, we've got a couple of different types of non-conforming. So, this non-conforming is dealing with design of the structure that I think the non-conforming you're referring to is occupancy.
Use, yeah.
And the use of the facility. So, maybe in our nomenclature for the code, we ought to differentiate between those and maybe not use the same non-conforming component, or, I don't know, something y'all can think about.
Right. We're actually, in this segment of the code, we're silent on the question of conformity or non-conformity, and the other section that does concern it is pretty clear about the different flavors. So, lot non-conformity, structure non-conformity, use non-conformity.
Okay, and you're right, most of this was use, I guess, non-conforming, but I think this solves one of the issues as part of that, too, so it looks good to me.
So, I think what his original question more or less was, the Board of Zoning Appeals will still take the cases of the people that are, that will continue to be non-conforming in design.
Yes.
Okay, that's how they, you're not stuck with a place you can't do anything with, you just got to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get an exception, hopefully, for those ones that now are not going to, are going to continue to not be conforming.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that may or may not have been your question, but that's how I was thinking your question was going to be.
This is Commissioner Ready. So, one of the, unfortunately, I left my laptop at home, which had all my notes on it, but the cottage villages, when we referenced it in the idea of tiny homes, it said the square footage is 600 feet. Do we have anything like that already in place in the community, or is this a new setup which a potential developer can look into?
Yeah, you know, actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I kind of neglected to cover it. It was modeled on the mobile home park or manufactured home park sort of model of development. So, there's two parts to this. One, there is provision in the building code, you know, international building code for smaller houses. They have a different set of building standards for those, so those would be allowed anywhere in town. But if you're going to do a development containing them, this lays out the standards for doing a village type of those. Now, we avoided using tiny home because we're not going as low, I think, but one, we're also trying to avoid having those mobile ones.
Right.
And we don't want to be associated with that. These have to be stick-built, they have to be inspected structures. The mobile ones are not inspected.
So, the tiny homes, in the past, when this particular discussion has come up, they weren't affiliated with international codes, but this time they are? There are international codes for tiny homes, is what I'm hearing you say?
There are, yes.
Okay. So, if in my neighborhood, somebody wants to put a tiny home there, they can, right? I guess, does it matter where, which neighborhood? There is a certain, we're just talking about one tiny home as opposed to a village.
I would have to, I'd have to research that one. I think they'd be anywhere because these building standards just pertain, when you want to build a house that's smaller than what the international building code says now, is your basic smallest size of a house. So, I don't think that there is a restriction, I mean, unless there's a private restriction like covenants or something in the neighborhood that goes with the subdivision, but the city doesn't touch those. But let me look at that, and I will communicate back to you on it.
Right. And the other piece is, how many houses are considered a cottage village?
I don't know.
Okay. It might be.
We might be silent on that.
I remember clicking onto it because there's been such a huge interest for a variety of populations, whether it's veterans, whether it's with younger folks looking for something temporary and they want to sell. So, I was just wanting to get more clarification. I clicked on some of the links, but there's such vast material. But again, this is just a discussion, and nothing is really approved. We're just kind of reviewing everything out there, as well as getting it out to the public. So, if there's a community that's interested in tiny homes or cottage villages, I hope we get some feedback from them as well if this is something that they are looking into, as opposed to your regular developers in our community. But I do appreciate all the information. Thank you. John, continuing on that, does a cottage, village, whatever, have to be connected to or considered a mobile home court in these regulations, or can it be separate?
It'd be separate.
It could be separate.
Yes.
I appreciated seeing that. I didn't have a lot of questions. It's really hard to go through brand-new regulations and critique them in any way because, you know, for the most part, they look fine. I was interested in, and we haven't, you haven't gotten, I think, to the non-residential. Did you?
No, I covered the commercial upfront, yes.
So, I was interested, I know that in the Aggieville vision, one of the things that I pushed for was a certain, continuing the Aggieville character, as opposed to just any box coming in and putting, setting up shop and sending somebody in to build their four-square walls and painting it orange or something, you know? So, you've covered that in these ordinances, so that people need, will have to have some brick on the face of it, of the building, so that it fits with Aggieville. If it's in the four-square blocks of Aggieville, like the Blument is across the street from it, but the interior of it, it seems to me that Aggieville is, has a brick theme, and downtown has a limestone theme for exterior, and so I just wondered what, if there's anything in here about that.
The, it is, and a lot of that is already in the code, and so we're transferring that over. And so, tonight, when I was talking about Aggieville, I was glossing over that, just skipping it because we already have those material requirements, and then also requirements for a certain amount of fenestration or windows on the ground floor and on the upper floors, and acceptable materials, and, you know, modulation within the facade in order to get that same sort of scale and interest. And of course, the core itself that's along Marrow is a sub-district that has a height limit, so you can't have something out of scale with the rest of Marrow Street. So, that one's protected, the outer sides of that, so everything along Blument and along Laramie, they can go up to like four stories, I believe, or something like that, because they're outside of that protected core. We are protecting that scale and the texture of it.
I hope so. I, you won't see this play out for years to come, so we have to have some faith that we're setting the standards to come, so. So, where can a cottage, village-type thing be located?
So, we have a system of base zoning, and then you can get different types of residential, they're not quite overlays, they're like companion slash zones to them. So, one of those is standard, one is cluster, and one is village-type. So, what would you need is basically your R1 zoning, and then you apply that slash village-type to it, and then you can do the development. You just follow the development standards then. So, it is a zoning action, but that's a, it's a zoning action now in order to be able to do a manufactured home park.
I have a question. So, kind of along that line of the overlay concept, and if we're, if I'm thinking down the road, there's a, oh, there was, there's a new overlay potentially for workforce housing or affordability or things that allow, how would that, I guess, is it even possible for that to be incorporated into the design standards as it is now, or with this proposal? I'm trying to think how that fits together, and...
It would not be a segment of a design standard. You'd have to say that the overlay has this additional use. Now, I don't know if it's necessary to define workforce housing as something different in order to allow it, unless it's of a very particular style that's not normally allowed in a zoning district. And if you want to introduce it, then you might need to say that this is going to be, this is allowed in these sorts of flavors. The basic, the easiest thing to do is to amend your zoning. If the product, workforce housing, looks different from another house next door, so much so that it's not allowed by the zoning district, then we should probably amend the zoning district. My guess is, though, that's just, that's a, that's a tag that's put on the product that has nothing to do with its outward appearance.
Well, maybe not even along the lines of workforce housing, but just almost in the reverse of what is called traditional or established overlay, where there's flexibility for innovation, for changes that are outside, is that, is that something that would need to be addressed as, from the overlay perspective, rather than a design standards perspective? Basically, I guess the intent of that overlay would almost be to relax the design standards, right? If it was the opposite of the traditional established overlay?
If that's how, well, somewhat in some respects, the traditional neighborhood overlay now, and more so when it becomes the OEN, relaxes what might be the basic standards. So, that's true. If that's a necessity to do workforce housing, or since you brought, or whatever, then, yeah, we'd have to have that discussion in order to say, this is, we relax these sort of things. One thing it could not relax, though, would be building standards, of course. All we're controlling are, you know, uses and bulk standards on lots, not the construction.
Okay, thanks.
Isn't that more along the lines, I've been struggling with this whole workforce housing thing, and one of the things a lot of cities have done, they call it inclusive zoning, and what they do is, you know, they use inclusive zoning to say, "This area be workforce," but essentially, it doesn't change any of the design parameters, it provides incentives. And it says, "This portion of town, we will provide XYZ incentives to build or renovate," but I don't think it changes any of that, so I'm not so sure if, you know, maybe that's something we shouldn't look at as part of the code, the idea of inclusive zoning and, you know, exactly what that is and how far we want to go on it. Because I think that's where we're going to end up going on workforce. That's probably one of the things for sure that that group will be asking about in the next year or so.
Okay.
I don't know if you're familiar with that concept.
Yeah, I am.
Lot of information out there, aren't there?
I've seen different models. I mean, one thing seems to me is like you may do it like an enterprise zone where you designate an area, and you say that money's going to go there, and it's not so much zoning, but on the other hand, you could have zoning rules that say, "If you develop, you need to make X percent of your development workforce," you know.
Yep, excellent, that's part of it, too.
Yes.
So, that would merit, maybe, maybe we could put something like that in here if there's time.
I hesitate to say yes on this because we've spent so much time on it.
I know, and we may just add to it.
I'm just going to be honest.
Before we go farther down the road here on the workforce project, but I just wanted to mention that because Aaron's right, we got to, that's one we got to come to grips with here within the next year or so, anyway.
In the single-use, multiple-family area, I found the term "street edge," and it made me think that I should ask you just how close to the edge of the street. What is the definition of "street edge"?
The street edge is everything within the travelway, so from the sidewalk to the other sidewalk, and the street in between, or the, you know, the pavement where vehicles go.
So, in that case, they would be able to build right up to the sidewalk? Like a downtown or like a Naggyville?
It could be. I don't have...
It was under single-use, multiple-plan where 80% of the building, anyway, can't read my own notes. Okay.
So, that was the multiple-family housing design?
Uh-huh.
That section?
Yeah, I think so. Multiple family is what it said. I just, I, you can just make a note that I asked about it, and...
If I'm looking at the right section here, I don't think it forgives setbacks or lets them go down to zero.
Okay.
But some, a certain portion of it has to be within, it looks like half of it has to be within 30 feet of the right-of-way.
I'll see if I can find it again.
Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to ask more about the redevelopment design. So, in the last 10, 15 years, we've had a lot of small houses, small white houses concept, built in the '50s or whatever, after the war, and developers have purchased them, and then they build on a house that's bigger, and then they have a duplex. Is that, are you encouraging that kind of, just, to me, it means that it'll be another 75 years before that lot could ever be developed, because there's new construction on it in conjunction with the old construction, but I just, it seems interruptive of the use of the block to ever be able to redevelop that block.
And is this specific to the TNO, or are you talking, no?
I don't know. I'm just asking the question, a generic question.
Right. So, the overlay standards, if they change the kinds of uses you can have, then I would say, yes, that we are encouraging it. I would look at the base zoning. Most of these overlays are not changing the allowable uses. The commercial ones sometimes have a larger range of commercial uses you can have, but the residential ones largely are all about site design, setbacks, buffering, landscaping, things of that nature, and not about what uses are now allowed or not allowed. We tend to shy away from that with our overlay districts. So, if it allows duplexes now, the overlay won't change that. You can, you can change it to a duplex. That's a matter of the base zoning.
I think we may expand the ability for duplexes to be in residential areas, so it's probably a non-discussion item. Okay, thanks.
Okay, doesn't look like we have any other questions. Excellent briefing, short, sweet, to the point.
So, Mayor, before we leave this, I did want to, we didn't get it in this PowerPoint, but I think Eric's going to bring up the schedule for future reviews. I know one of the things that we kind of set out the hour... I know one of the things that we kind of said at the out front, we were going to try and have your reviews follow the planning board reviews, and we caught out of a little whack on that. I mean, you're seeing this before the planning board has reviewed it at least, I think they've reviewed it a long time ago. But in the re-review, we're out of sync a little bit, and so, here's kind of the proposed timeline for when the planning board's going to review some of the segments of the draft, as well as when the city commission will. So, I know we had indicated that in some cases, that would be a full two weeks ahead of time, and others that it wouldn't. So, again, our plan is whenever that goes to the planning board, we would send it to you as well, so you'd have a little more time to review. And then, Eric or John, you might just elaborate about, in this process, where stakeholder input comes.
Well, the stakeholder input is in the process of being developed. Obviously, there's groups within the community that use zoning regulations a lot more than the general public, so developers, consultants, realtors, those types of people will be developing a schedule to go directly to them. Oh, right. And the OEC, which is the Ordinance Advisory Committee, which is basically a citizen committee that's been involved, this column is showing the dates of those meetings. This is the planning board work session dates, and this is city commission work session dates. But more for the general public and some of those other groups that might not be directly involved on the OEC. Again, we'll be developing a schedule of engagements, both virtual as well as hopefully in person, once we get beyond the current state of the pandemic. Also, on the Engage MHK website that you were just seeing in the previous item, we have a webpage specifically for the MDC. The entire ordinance is there now, so the public can see the entire ordinance and its draft form. On kind of the off weeks between these work sessions and things, Chad is going to be doing some blog posts to kind of keep things interesting and to talk about different topics. We're continuing to create more of the videos that you saw last time around, so that each of these articles will have short videos that give an overview, and those will be posted on the web, so the public can see those as well. So, there's a full range of things. We're just beginning to get into the public outreach, again, because of the pandemic, and we were waiting to have the full documents available for the public to see before we really started to launch that public phase, but we're just on the cusp of it right now.
Would you mind sending that to each of us, so we can...
Yes, email.
Exactly, yeah. And I would say that I did watch one of the little videos, and I thought Samantha did a wonderful job.
She has a very good...
She had a great voice for it, yeah.
Very good voice. And this, again, this is, this is just the schedule for kind of walking the community and you and the planning board through the articles. We anticipate the actual formal adoption process involves public hearing with the planning board, and then the city commission does first and second reading, you know, and essentially like a public hearing. We would anticipate, if all this goes relatively smoothly through July, then we would start the formal public adoption process in late August, probably, with the planning board and the city commission sometime in September, so. Still a lot of discussion and education to go between now and then, so we're just in the beginning stages.
Yeah, I liked the, I liked the website. I spent some time going through there, and you got like four videos up there now. I guess you'll add one on this one.
Right.
And I think those do a great job of, you know, saving you having to wade through thousands of pages of paper, but I think that's great, and, you know, I've tried to share that with folks that are interested, if they want to dig into the details, it's all there, and then you can, you know, engage.
Right.
Great work on that website.
And the other, the other component, and if you recall, the consultant that we had helped us do this, Kennedy Keast has a proprietary software that this platform will be on, that also is married up with MUNI code, which is what our municipal code is on, so that if we make changes in the zoning of the MDC, it automatically changes it in our city code, because it's on MUNI code, so they, those two platforms talk to each other. But where I was going is, our consultant is still building some of the tools, so when, and it's not on the Engage Manhattan website right now, but once the Ncode platform is finalized and all the tools are there, the public or anybody, a realtor, could go on it and say, they have a client that wants to do a coffee shop, and they can put that in, it'll tell them what the zoning districts, it's allowed, how much parking they need, how much landscaping, depending on how much square footage the store is. And so, those tools are still being built based on the draft regulations, so that's still to come.
Okay, excellent. Any other comments tonight, or?
Just, I was going to ask why the definitions are last.
Why, I don't know, I guess historically, the definition...
As I read through these, I want to look at a definition and...
Well, the way this whole ordinance is designed, really to be online or on your phone, not a paper three-ring notebook. So, when you're reading through it, you'll be able to hover your mouse over a term, and it'll take you to the definition.
Okay.
So, you don't have to flip through back, or, you know...
No, I don't care how we do it, I just...
Scroll back to the definitions, you'll be able to just hover over a word, and the definition will pop up.
But we can't look at a definition for what we're reviewing, because the definitions haven't been provided yet, and it won't be till the tail end. That's all, just...
Well, if you go to the Ncode website, and you're looking at it there, that's where those definitions are active, and so, when you hover over them, you get a pop-up that tells you what the definition is for that term. You'll see them, because they're colored differently, I think they're a blue or something.
Kind of a back shading, but...
Yeah.
I'm willing to bet, but there's not one commissioner that's been to Ncode to do things like that.
The document that's, I think, currently up is a PDF, so those aren't live.
Yeah.
Once we get it all built, on the Ncode site, and you'll be able to hover over a term, and it'll, the definition will pop up.
I can send you, every, all of you, the Ncode web address for that, but it's also on that, the public website, it links to it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that worked when I went in there, but, you know, some of them function, some of them didn't, because you still have it under construction.
Maybe in the next...
I thought it worked fine.
Maybe the next presentation, we can demonstrate that.
Sure.
Cool.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it worked fine, but...
Thank you, that'd be great.
Okay, I guess on that, I guess on that note, we can actually finish before an hour. Amazing. And so, meetings adjourned. Thank you.